Tonight, just looking at the sketches here, it looks like Deb has a lot of windows around her, and we can't tell that it's raining up there, Deb. So we're gonna watch your screen for the evening, and that will lift everybody's spirits.
It doesn't look too bad out there at the moment, but golf was canceled tonight, so it must have been raining pretty hard at the course.
Uh-oh, uh-oh. Okay.
She's backward.
I'm sorry. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:02. And we'll ask Robin to take the roll call.
Certainly.
And then we'll do the...
Judy Breeze is absent, we know. Steve Krukshank.
Here.
John Klukowski.
Yeah.
Deb Kurtz.
Here.
Jeannie Shields.
Here.
Vanessa Warren.
Present.
And Linda Zizek.
Here, here.
Welcome, everyone. Would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance...
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now if everybody would just move to the agenda, and we will take a look at the board minutes from the May 5 regular meeting and the May 20 special meeting. If you had a chance to review them, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
All right, Vanessa, and do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Jeannie, any changes or corrections? Hearing none? Are those in favor, I?
Aye.
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 It was Deb that seconded.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, next on the agenda is we have need for an executive session, and this will be to, I believe, discuss personnel. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, I?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Linda, I would like to invite George in, and George, Jen, Patty, and David, Bob, and Randy. So cabinet and myself, and George.
Okay. So we are leaving this meeting?
Um, no, there should be a room that Jen's putting out.
Oh.
Cabinet, George, and the board.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, everybody, go join.
Well, hello, John Godfrey. How are you?
We're doing well, Randy. It's been a long time. Haven't seen you.
Yes, it has.
Yep, I think the last time I saw you, I was delivering hospice plants to the Shenango campus there at Allen's, Allen's new namesake there.
Absolutely. How you been?
Doing well, doing well.
What brings you to this meeting?
I'm a newly elected Boise's board member.
Oh, welcome aboard.
I'm observing.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, good.
Someday, I'm gonna contact you and request a walk-through. As I say, I think the last time I was at a Boise's facility itself was delivering the hospice plants, and I'd like to just walk through and see what everything's like.
Right, I'm over at the Harold Campus now.
Oh, well, that's even better, because I don't think I've ever been to the Harold Campus.
Okay, well, bring comfortable walking shoes.
I do. I'm no longer refereeing, but I still do go to the gym every day, so...
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you realize that you're still on YouTube streaming.
Oh, okay, lovely. Anytime, just let me know.
Okay, I can do that, Randy.
All right. I don't know if I can sit here in silence, though. But I'll do my best.
No.
They still have a couple of other things to talk about, actually one other thing to talk about then the rest will be joining us.
I feel like I'm on star trek.
We are back. Okay. And we are moving down to our presentation area. Negotiations and health insurance. Perry? Leave Perry behind?
He's coming.
Robin, motion by Deb and John to return to regular session.
Thanks, Linda.
Perry, are you all set with where our down to presentations?
Okay, so if you're ready, ready for the presentation, then I will share my screen. Can everybody see that?
No.
No.
I'm on now.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Good. All right. Um, so tonight, we want to do a presentation on salary and health insurance. we wanted to do a presentation on salary and health insurance. It's very important for the BOCs that we continue to move forwards in our mission and vision. And I took the liberty to take and write down some of the things that the board believes in. And so I'm going to do those things first and then do some comparisons of the region. And we'll talk a little bit more as we continue to move through. I'd ask the the board to ask questions anytime through the presentation they'd like or hold them to the end. So the BOCs Board of Education is committed to the strategic plan core beliefs. Okay, under the core belief concept of one BOCs, we need to promote and enact a fair compensation for all employees. And that's across all of our units and our non reps. This said, the BOE board would like to provide every employee with a compensation above the average of the 16 component school districts in the combined in combining the salary and the insurance for the skill level of their position at the BOCs. And that's extremely important, okay? Because we want to be very careful not to overprice our services and out price ourselves in the marketplace to our component districts. Okay, but to be fair and equitable, we need to be above average. Of course, our strategic plan is to deliver high quality educational programs and services that are diverse, innovative, and cost effective. Our vision is to provoke propel regional growth as a premier provider of educational services. And I know that the board knows these things, but since, you know, this really is embodying kind of the philosophy that I started out with. I think it takes some time to to actually review this a little bit. So in the strategies this year, one of the things that we really have come up with under educate is that we want to be one BOCs. We want to provide students with a high quality, consistent programming across all campuses. And that that really is the the focus. We want to be able to provide our students with the best staff possible in order for them to get a quality education. And in order to do that, I think that the board recognizes, and I think it stands to be noted that the board recognizes that we have to meet the goals that I put on the first slide of being above average. So our core beliefs, and I think that we all have read this before, but I think some of these things really play into the negotiations process. I think the honesty and the integrity are very strong things that I know that our staff has tried to provide during any of the negotiations. I remember when I first came with the BAA, we did a leveling exercise for that unit, which we took some people who were not paid above average and moved them. We've done that in several other instances in my five years of tenure here with directors salaries as well. And some of the other staff in in supercap. So as we continue to move forwards, we want to make sure that we demonstrate this strong, strong strengths being transparent in the process. And I think this is part of it as well. Tonight's, tonight's mission is to really try to provide an education of where we're at and where the board is at. With basically being able to provide that above average compensation to all employees. Okay, currently, we have employees who are compensated below the regional average, and we know this, and we've known this for a while. Okay, we have employees who are compensated significantly higher as well than the regional average in salary and insurance. And again, it's very important to understand that compensation, you cannot, you cannot neglect the fact that insurance and salary go together to a combined scale, if you will. Therefore, leveling of the salary scale must take place. Okay? At this time, although all employees are eligible for the same health insurance benefits, there are inequities in the way employees in the different unions pay their share of premiums. This is problematic, as you see in number three, it's divisive. These two things are divisive and prevent the BOCs organization from fulfilling the strategic plan, our core beliefs, and truly becoming one BOCs. And they're divisive in the fact that people look between the units and they see that one unit gets this type of compensation, and they're wondering why they don't get this type of compensation. And then even within units, and I'll show you this specifically in the Besby unit, there's inequities in the pay scale. So there are some people who are above average, if you will, or groups, if you will. And there are groups that are way below average for the region, and that's really depicted from number one. And, you know, as we move forwards, we we in negotiations look to try to some, you know, to to shore this up or to level the salaries, like I said before. Um, as we, as as we move forwards, I'm going to show you a series of graphs. And these series of graphs are basically the same. At this point in time, we are able to provide you with, I think, 12 different districts information. We're going to compile the rest of it. We just didn't get the information from the districts in in a timely fashion, so we couldn't put it all in there. But you'll see this, this slide will be done. We've been able to compare aides, our clerical staff, our nursing staff, and our custodial staff. And you'll see that there's wide disparities between the groups. And so the red line represents component district average, so all the blue bars, if you will, starting out with GMU and Nina and Franklin, these are the hourly pay for aides across the region. Okay? You'll see that the average there is $14.68. You'll also see in the green DCMO BOCs. And our best unit hasn't had a raise in two years, and so the green represents where their pay has been for two years. So above average at $15.31. If they, if we were to have provided 3.25% raise like the BAA unit has gotten and the non reps have gotten and the teachers have gotten over those two years, they've been at 16.32 for $16.32. So there's the comparison for the region, if you will. We've got the big districts in here as well as the small districts. And again, to to show some of the information in the same way, but then adding the insurance to it. Okay, so this slide is extremely important in the fact that the we we take total compensation. This is wages plus health insurance. Okay? And you'll notice, again, we've we've created a graph, if you will. The low, the average in the high are in blue in purple. Okay, in the blue represents a person who is on a single insurance plan. And purple would represent a person who is on a family plan. Okay, in the average for the region for family plan, again, hourly plus the compensation is 41,000 and change. And then the single average is 27,228. Okay, and you can see off to the right hand side there that, again, DCMO, where we're at for payment for the aides again, is above average in the red and then in the green as well, above average. Actually, it's above the highest in in the green. And then if we were to have been able to give 3.25% raise in each year, again, our aides would have been paid higher than the highest in the region in total compensation. And so I'm pretty evident there to see where we're at. And so here's some of the disparities in our clerical compensations. Okay, our clerical compensations are running below average, as you can see. The the regional average is $17.52. And currently, our clerical staff, and this would be the people who are in the accounting departments, people who are office professionals. These staffs are definitely under the average, underpaid, and need to be leveled, what we call leveled. And that's what we did with the other units. I talked about that earlier. The process needs to be comparative data, and then we need to look at trying to get folks to that mid range, not not average, not high, but mid range between those two. And so there's needs to be a lot of movement in this group. And again, as you look, DCMO, if in in the purple, if we had applied a 3.25% across the board, that still wouldn't have put them in that range. Okay? So these folks are are folks that need, if you will, more compensation in order to get them to a leveled spot. And then, again, same format that we had with the aides, the clerical staff. You'll see that the average here for a single family is in blue again, and then purple, it would be for the family. And again, across the top there, when you look at adding the compensation in that is given to our best employees with the hourly rate, then our family folks do tend to edge up into that above average range. Okay, but our single folks, the folks that are taking single coverage are still below their average. And again, as you can see over here on the right hand side, the information from the districts. And again, I'd like to thank David and Aaron Gramstead in our business department for pulling this information out for statistical data that we've got from all the districts. And again, we we don't have all the districts, but we have most of them. So. And then moving on, here's our custodial workers. And again, a component district average is $15.25. Again, as we look at our custodial folks, there needs to be some leveling take place here because they're definitely not at average. And they're certainly not in that midpoint between high and middle. But again, we need to level, as I said before. Here's the custodial compensation with the wage and the health insurance. And again, in blue, you'll see the average for the regions right here. And then the family average would be up here, single and family. And you'll note that, yes, with the compensation of the insurance, we are above average, okay? And not only for the family here in green, but also at average at the red here, and then with the 3.25s each year, a little bit above average for the single families. So when you look at both of those things combined for the custodial workers, you know, it's it's not as disparaging as it could be. And then when you look at the RNs and the LPNs, again, this is a significant concern for us. There's at least currently about a $10 to $11 difference just between the average and of the region and what we're paying over here in green and in purple. Again, these things need to be leveled off. And as we continue to move through our process and negotiations, it's certainly our hope that we can be successful with that. And again, here we are with the RNs and the LPNs, and you'll note here with the compensation of health insurance added. Okay, the single coverage, okay, is still significantly below. And then the family coverage added in still is significantly below the averages. So they're they are definitely undercompensated, and this needs to change as we move through the leveling process. And this is kind of how they all stack up, if you want all the all the groups together. Again, when we look at the aides, they're the highest. And again, they're a higher over average. This would be the regional average here. They're they're over average here and here, running about the same on the high here, not not quite as high. But these two here are probably equal to the high. And then when we look at the clerical staff, again, not not close to the high, more like the average. Again, high here for custodials. Hey, we're we're pushing that envelope, but not really. We're more towards the average. And again, here, we're more towards when you stop and think about the nurses and look at the nurses, we're more towards the very low. Again, that's where we've got to really look at some significant changes. So the the other piece that fits into this is employee insurances per paycheck. And so I put together some of the comparisons, if you will, between the groups and the BOCs. And as we continue to move forwards, we'll say this right off the bat. We definitely are going to be in conversations with our non rep folks and starting to have the conversations of how we can help level them up and also get them to the 10% insurance as well. Understanding that we have to, you know, compensate them for going to 10%. And making sure that we don't in the process out price ourselves or create disparities within that unit as well, like there are in Bespa. The the interesting thing here is, this is, if you look at the top here, okay, so members really look at like, what's what's it cost me per paycheck? I had a long conversation with one of one of our folks about how they look at their insurance. Of course, we tend to look at things on a on a total basis, like a snapshot and total salary for the a unit or total insurance cost for a unit. But our employees, many of them look at it as a deduct from their paycheck. So that's the way I put this, and so I think it depicts everything that probably people will see. But the dollar increase in insurance from 2016, 17 to 2021. A member in BAA, BTA, and non reped men has had an increase of $60.93 if they were a family. They had a $22.53 if they were a single. And then, again, the the employee and child, and then the employee and spouse. The non, the non rep clerical and the other groups that are in here, they've seen similar increases, although slightly less. And then when we look at Bespa, because of the caps, they've not seen an increase in five years. Only this one over here, which amounts to about $20 over the the five years is an increase because they reached the caps. You know, the caps in the insurance that prevents them from paying more of an increase in the insurances. And and again, I depicted this earlier on, this is divisive within the organization, because when you look at this, you know, people don't understand the compensation that I just went through. And it it looks like, well, Bespa is getting, you know, something I'm not getting if I'm in BTA or BAA. And, you know, it it creates this, I guess, if you will, conflict within the BOCs. It's un, it's unfortunate, but this is the way this has developed over time. And the unfortunate piece of this is a system like this is not financially sustainable. When we're looking at insurance costs, they're going up significantly. In that, we've had conversations about in the past, it's because of our utilization. So as we, as I move on, I also put this in something that maybe the board would probably get a better perception of because it's not on a per paycheck basis. But again, this depicts the same groups in the same colors, as you can see. But the increases are in percentages, and the percentages are based on total payment of premium. So the premiums have gone up this much in percentage. Okay, which is a significant increase to these people. And then, again, the the Bespa, because of the caps and has has really only increased in the family in the last five years. And that's about 1,000, 1, 1%, 1.5%, if you will, 1.52. And that's about one thou- one one percent, 1.5% if you will, 1.52. And if I I know that we want to make sure that we understand what the caps are. So an individual policy is capped at four hundred dollars. And an employee's spouse is capped at nine hundred and fifty dollars. An employee's child is eight hundred and fifty, and a family is one thousand two hundred and ninety. So it's it's much, again, the the graph showed the disparities between the units. But these are the caps. And, you know, that's where they're at at the current time. When we stop and think about getting to one BOSIs, this is really talking about, I I had an employee tell me when I first came that the BOSIs is a family. And, you know, we we we're a family and in is is I look at it, we're one BOSIs. I think it's saying somewhat the same thing. Our strategic plan, for example, has all stakeholders at the table developing it, making the decisions. Okay? We've restructured the BOSIs administration. That's that has had a significant impact between the cooperation in the collegiate working relationships that we have between our units. In the past, we had silos, we had the ISS silo, we had the CTE silo, we had the the special ed silo, we had the buildings and grounds silo, we had all these silos. And getting to one BOSIs, we have one silo, it's one BOSIs, it's one BOSI silo. That means we're all in this together. And some of the things that have happened as we've moved through these five years have been phenomenal in that. The mid-year changes and the changes that we've made throughout this year, 2021, have been phenomenal. They've been transformational for the pole campus. We've seen cooperation of O and M in teaming, truly teaming with our educational staff. And our educational staff truly teaming with the O and M folks to really come up with some 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 decisions that were made to create better environments for our our staff. Change the perspective of our students, the the work that's been done at the pole campus. We were having destruction of property on a regular basis. Kids kicking things, breaking, destroying. I believe we've gone now, I'm going to go out on a limb, I think it's about two months without anything being destroyed. That's been transformational in the last six months. And that's because the O and M staff and our educational staff are working together, and we're holding people accountable for their actions. We're holding students accountable for their actions. And we're working together to solve problems. It's it's definitely a change. We've got better, safer, and 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 these changes have affected both campuses because we have better, safer, and more consistent programming for all students at both the pole and the Herald Campus. So kudos to the folks that have done that work. Supervisor cabinet, I can't stress this enough, I only know of one other organization that includes all of the unions to sit at administrative table to have conversations, to make sure that all voices are heard. And our cabinet, over this past year, we were able to add the BTA reps and the Bespa reps, Chris McCall and Eileen Winhofer, sit at every cabinet meeting. And they have an open voice to share concerns or to hear the things that they're going to change so that they can take these things back to their union members. Benefits Advisory Committee, the BAC, when we developed that, we had all or all of our employee groups represented equally. And we had a process just recently of voting, then in which that process worked as planned. Everybody had a voice, everybody was heard, and the response was the response, the decision of the group was carried out. Sharing the decisions of insurance as we move forwards is going to be critical. And I can't say enough about what that group does. And then the just the improved communications, we've got a communications plan. We've continued to have all-staff meetings throughout this year. We've had annual employee surveys, we did, because of the mid-year change, we did one mid-year survey to get the pulse of the BOSIs. And Dr. Hamilton has put together a nice task force to address those concerns. And I'm sure that as we move forwards, I think that he's going to have a report for the board in our next meeting. So. I think all in all, we're moving forwards. As an organization, I'm very proud of where we're moving. And I look forward to a future of continued growth in these areas. It is so important for us to understand and 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 share the feeling and the understanding of one BOSIs. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that anybody may have.
Perry, can you just tell me, how many people are within the Bespa unit?
I don't have exact numbers on that.
Approximately.
Approximate numbers, I'm thinking that we're in Patty, you could probably help me, and Jen. Randy, I'm thinking that we're probably around 200, about half-staff, I would guess.
Okay.
Is that accurate?
Can I can I ask how many nurses there are within the two campuses?
Yep, Patty, Jen?
There's a school nurse at each campus, there's an LPN assigned to the health office, and then we have some one-on-one LPNs. So right now, we have two school nurses and four.
Yeah.
Four LPNs.
So six altogether?
Patty, can you can you get that first, the the first number? I'm sure you can get into Windcap maybe and get that for us, please.
I don't need exact, Perry. I mean, I just was trying to gauge certain things.
Yep. I don't know, Bob may have some numbers of breakdown of where we're at, because he ran the other numbers, but that's, I don't want to tax him on that.
Yeah. I just, I wanted an idea about something.
Our groups, I don't have it by organization, I've got it by titles. And so this is approximate, we're probably looking at about 230, 240.
In Bespa?
In Bespa, based on job titles. But there may be people with, like, assistant coordinator position that I have included that are are in a different group.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are the RNs in this in Bespa?
Yes.
All the nurses are correct?
Correct.
Is it typical to have clerical staff and classroom staff in the same union?
Um, not necessarily. I've seen it multiple ways. We have one district that has eight units. And it's it's a small district, and so they have like two or three people in one unit, and then they have 10 in another, and then so it's all broke up. So that's an extreme, Jeannie. And then you have, like, we have where everybody's in one. You know, and and again, part of the disparities come from, like, for example, the hourly, the workday, right? So an aide works six hours a day. And a clerical worker in Randy's shop, let's say, would work eight hours a day. And then there's 10 months, you know, the the aides work 10 months. And so their salary total is going to be much smaller because the time on task is not there.
Right.
Look at, you look at Randy's staff or any of the clerical or any of the custodial staff, they're working, you know, a full-time, eight-hour job.
Right.
A month out of the year.
Right.
I looked at the snapshot from when we started the negotiations, and the number was about 150. So it might be about that, might be a little more or less right now, but when we started, it was 150.
154.
All the people on the Bespa unit.
The best for you.
Thank you, Penn.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Linda.
No, thank you, Perry. We appreciate that. That's great information. Data is our basis of making informed decisions. Absolutely, thank you. Okay. Great presentation. Moving on on our agenda. Next on our agenda is the public comment. I always just refer to Robin. Have we had any requests for public comment?
We have not, not to my board clerk email at all, Linda.
Okay, appreciate that. Okay, moving on to reports, we have board committees. And we'll start with, here's the report from the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Yes, there is.
Hi, Dave.
Hi, I'm starting off with the EPC. The heat pump, we're two-thirds away to completion. Work on it is going to switch to the second shift starting next week. That's going to ease congestion. Window replacement at the Support Service Center starts tomorrow. Two crews, the way it has to be done, from my understanding, is one crew pulls it out, covers, moves on, and the next one comes in and installs the actual window. That's also going to be second shift. Internal external lighting is still delayed. Support Service Center, Phase One, very close to finish. We'll have a report on the cost, and it's beautiful. Phase Two proposal would be for improvements to the main corridors and the bathrooms, and that's still in the planning, and Bob will bring us up to speed and show you some nice diagrams and so forth at some point here soon. And Phase Three, we have four possible options right now that are being reviewed. Herald Campus COS and Weldings still at the SED. Hopefully, we'll have some movement soon. And at the Pole Campus, we're working on another solution for the fumes from the Conservation Department. Should be a low-cost solution, hopefully. And the sewage pump issue is solved.
That's always a good thing, always.
Deb or Bob, anything to add?
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
To Policy Committee, the Policy Committee met this evening, and we reviewed a draft policy of handling and disseminating identifying information for sex offenders. So that will be moving to first view review by the board for the July meeting. And I believe later in our agenda, we have some policies we will be approving tonight. I believe there's four policies, or at least reviewing tonight for first reading can be approved if you so choose as a board. So that was our, we had a pretty short policy meeting tonight, but. And just a reminder, John Godfrey, our new board member that'll be joining us formally in July, shared with us that the onboard newsletter this week that was received this week by board members actually has like a good piece in it, we, has an article in it that we would encourage you to read on establishing and developing board policies. So we'd encourage the board to do that as they take a look at that onboard this this week. Anything else, Policy Committee, that I missed? Okay, moving on to, we have the Shenango County School Boards Association. Any update, John, on that?
Yes, we did have a meeting, however, I was unable to make it, so I'll defer to Jeannie for that report.
Jeannie. So we met last month via Zoom, and we're in the process of planning an event for the summer. But it's just going to be a nice get-together, allowing people to see each other again and do some networking. Next, this month, we're in June, our meeting is going to be in person with the option to Zoom if someone chooses to. And we're also working very hard to have have representation from every district at the table.
Great.
And we're losing Keith Ives. Keith did not, his term was up at Afton, and he did not rerun, so will Afton's not only losing him, Shenango County School Boards is losing him and.
So maybe they will select someone else next month in real?
We would hope so.
Right, good. All right, thank you for that update.
Sure.
And anything from NISBA for those that are involved with the NISBA advocacy program?
Did you see today's that came, well, I got mine today, says 2021 Annual Business Meeting to be virtual?
Yes.
So that the decision was final, apparently.
I think that's a great idea, then you don't get have to miss any of the sessions. And they tested it out. I I watched you guys when you went last year, and I thought it worked really well, so.
It did, it went really well.
Did. Thank you, Jean. Moving on to our next item under reports, we have financial and claims auditor reports. So you you have the claims auditor report for May, the financial report for March, and for April. I will accept a motion to approve.
I will make the motion to approve.
Vanessa, do I have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Jeannie, okay, any questions, changes? Hearing done, all those in favor, I?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. And then moving on to the Instructional Services and Management Services Combined Report. And we always appreciate this report. It's really great from all departments within the the organization and the activities that are occurring there and and what's happening with each in within each area. We we really get a lot of information out of this. Thank you once again. I guess we can have a motion to do this. I think we've had, we've done this different ways, but motion to approve the Instructional Services and Management Services Combined Board Report.
So move.
Okay, Deb, thank you. Do I have?
Second.
Okay, Dave, thank you. Any other input or information? Okay, all those in favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Moving on to policy approvals. And in your packet, you have the resolution for the four policies. 1001, Community Use of Dusman BOSI Facilities. Policy 1003, the BOSIs Volunteers. Policy 1201, which is press releases, and Policy 1400, Constitutionally Protected Prayer in Schools. Do I have a motion for that resolution?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Deb, Vanessa, and Deb, any questions? Okay, if you are ready, we'll go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor, I?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion is carried. Moving on to contractual, we have a resolution awarding bids and contracts.
So moved.
Vanessa?
Second.
Okay, Dave, any questions on this conference? Hearing done, all those in favor, I?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Moving on to old business, the CTE Equipment Reserve Fund. This is information purposes, letting us know what districts have responded and have approved. Um, this is information purposes, letting us know what districts have responded and have approved. Um, and it looks like there's just a couple that we're maybe waiting for due to board meeting, um, time. Is there any updates on this from any of our administrators? Okay, so just information purposes only? Okay.
David, you did a survey, I think you had, uh, I think between you and Robin, you ended up with how many districts, 12?
They're, Perry, they're listed in the content.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we, um, Robin, when we met at Cabinet, um, identified she'd only heard from, I think at that point, four or five school districts. So, uh, she and I sent some very, uh, friendly and gentle reminders out. And, uh, I was happy to see that both superintendents and their assistants were very quick to respond and give us that information, so.
Thank you.
Friendly reminder never hurts.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. We start with a resolution declaring certain property as surplus.
So moved.
Dave?
Second.
Vanessa? Any questions coming? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. I'm sorry, my Alexa thought I was talking to her. She was... I have, I have people speaking in both ears. Okay, resolution authorizing funding for reserve fund. And we are now, we'll have probably Pat Powers. He has joined us. Thank you, Pat, for joining us and staying with us for the meeting.
No problem.
This has to do with, um, the revert, the funding of the reserve funds that we talked about on our, um, initial audit review this year.
Uh, just to point out, for the board's information, can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
We, um, we just started our interim, uh, fieldwork today. We had a team out there. So, um, and I was down there for at least half a day, just looking over a few things. So we are starting the audit, just so you know that. This resolution is part of the Office of the State Controllers' push to increase transparency in BOSI's and districts. So what we are recommending our boards that they pass resolutions before the end of the year on funding of reserves. And I would point out, when you read these reserves, the resolutions, I'm sorry, every one of, is an up to amount. So we're, we're authorizing that you can put money into reserves up to a certain amount and not to exceed that amount. So, um, if we get to the end of the year and we look at the reserves and we feel, you know, the, the board, the administration feels there's sufficient amounts in those reserves, we won't move any money into them, but we are given, the board is given permission to increase these reserves. And just to go over them real quickly, the liability reserve is the first one, up to 600,000 and there is a limit on that reserve up to 3% of the budget. However, in your case, we have the deficit in the Special Aid Fund, which uses up a lot of that. We have a specific liability out there that we can fund, so, um, even if we put in another 600, would not exceed that limit. And then the board may want to move some of that reserve, the liability reserve, back out into the Special Aid Fund to reduce some of that deficit. So the resolution is to authorize up to 600,000 more into that reserve. Insurance reserve, an additional 25,000 into there. Um, that reserve, it's about 185,000 in that reserve right now. And I kind of look at them both, liability and reserve, as a combined entity there. Retirement contribution, Contribution Reserve, one of your largest ones. Um, we're really only looking at the teacher retirement component of that and authorizing up to 200,000. And that's based on 2% of your teacher employee salaries, uh, which comes out to about 180,000 last year, so we're saying up to 200,000 this year. That one I would recommend funding, um, pretty strongly because you can put in for five years, 2% a year to get up to 10% into that reserve. Um, and that one along with the other part of that reserve, the employees' retirement contribution reserve, you can, uh, use that money pretty easily and you always know you're going to get a retirement bill, a pension expense. So that reserve is, uh, they're pretty good ones to, to fund and they're flexible. I would point out, if, I don't know if you had heard, um, the controller put out a press release, I think it was last week, that the employees' retirement system, their year-end is March 31, 2021. They had one of their best years ever as far as return on investments because the stock market went up still high. Um, I can't guarantee that's going to reduce your rates going forward, however, so we'll have to just see. But it's a good thing for the rates that they had that, so. But I would highly recommend that teacher retirement part. And unemployment, we were looking at another 25,000. Uh, your, your unemployment reserve is pretty well-funded. However, with the additional unemployment out there and some of the fraud that's going on in that system, you know, I, we're authorizing 25,000 more. Not sure we're going to need that, but I think it's a good idea to, to at least authorize some of that money. Until we get the June report, you know, the June quarter ending billing, which probably won't come until July. So then we can see where we are with the unemployment. And then the Employee Benefit Accrued Liability Reserve, that's another large reserve. That's for accrued vacation and sick days that pay, you pay your employees upon retirement or, or leaving. An amount not to exceed 200,000 into that reserve. That's around 1.6 in there and that's a, just about equal to the liability. The, you know, we got to look at that in that that reserve is highly restricted as far as how you can use it. It has to be used to pay those accumulated days, so. Um, those are the reserves that we looked at and we wanted to, uh, have the board pass a resolution to fund up to those amounts, those reserves. So I'll take any questions, try and answer them for you if you have any, on any of those reserves.
Okay.
Can I just, another thing, your total reserves at the end of last year were about 7,168. It's about 13% of your budget. And the two biggest ones were the Employee Benefit Reserve and the Employee Contribution Reserve, Employee Retirement Reserve. Those two alone amounted to about four and a half million.
Okay, um, I'm seeing the resolution indicate two reserve fundings. Am I correct? Um, Randy, I'm not sure, Perry, who I'm asking this question to.
Randy? Where did he go?
Linda?
Yes.
If I might be able to help you with that. We had a draft in there for Pat to look at. If that's why you're seeing two. I didn't have a resolution number on it until Pat confirmed he was okay with the numbers.
Ah, okay.
It's the same thing. Just one did not have the number on it and I had already released the packet, so I put the new one in up top, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, is the board all on target with the numbers that, um, that you are seeing in this resolution? Um, based on the information that, that Pat just shared?
Numbers did change.
I'm sorry?
Uh, the numbers did not change. It's just that the one I have didn't have a resolution number on it.
Okay, I, I, okay, let me just, let me just be clear here. On this resolution for funding of reserves, there are, um, there's a funding for the liability reserve. There's a number in that and there is a number in the, um, Employee Benefit Accrual Liability, the two, uh, uh, reserve accounts.
Correct. The resolution number at the top, R E S 2021, was missing on the one because we had a draft in there for you to look at from Friday.
Okay, so my question...
So now it's not, resolution number 292.
So the one down in administrative content is the draft.
Correct.
One on the top is the one we're making the motion on, right?
Okay, so the one on the top is funding of two reserves. There it is. Okay, I'm sorry, I was confused. Is the board clear? Um, before we take the motions, are you clear on the resolution 2021-06R-292? With the various funding, um, that is the resolution we're looking at. And if, if we're clear, um, we will accept a motion, the motions on this?
I would make the motion.
Okay, and do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Jean, any further questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Sorry for that confusion, Linda.
Thank you for clarifying, everyone. Resolution accepting cash and item donation.
So moved.
Genie, thank you. Second?
Second.
Vanessa, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. And we're moving on down to Personnel Matters. Have a listing of the information provided by Perry on the various areas. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Vanessa, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. And then we are moving on down through our communications, our listing of communications. Or it is familiar with these. These are, um, on each board agenda. And moving on to future topics, um, any further information on, um, the 50th anniversary or the Allen Pole? Um, campus naming, any information on this, Perry, that you'd like to?
Yep, at this time, um, the Allen Pole naming a campus, um, we're going to do two ceremonies. Um, there's going to be two unveilings. Um, one is going to be more intimate with, um, Alan, uh, having, giving him the grace of, um, you know, picking the guest list, if you will. Um, that will be the unveiling at the, at the campus, uh, building itself, the unveiling of his name on the building. Uh, that will be held on Friday, the 18th. And then, um, we are planning, we're in the initial planning stages and I believe it's all coming together. Um, we will be asking all staff, um, on Thursday, the day before, the 17th, um, inviting all staff to attend if they would like, uh, it's not required, but if they would like, um, a, a, a brief, uh, ceremony, uh, more, more informal than, uh, the second ceremony the next day. Um, and we will be unveiling the sign at the road. Um, and so Alan will be present and then so folks can, um, the, the idea is to give Alan exposure to people who would like to shake his hand and greeting and tell him congratulations. And so, um, it's not going to be the full-blown ceremony. Um, and it will take place probably around, uh, if we get this, uh, correct, someplace between, uh, 3:30, 3:15 and 3:30, uh, that day. So, um, we are, um, in the, as I, um, you know, have, have alluded to, uh, we would like to, um, give our staff, uh, Juneteenth off, which would be the 18th. Um, and that would be the day in which, um, you know, we would be doing, uh, the ceremony, if you will, uh, for the campus naming, um, you know, with, with dinner afterwards, et cetera. So, um, kind of a twofold, if you will, event. Um, and, um, in that, um, then because of COVID, I guess probably, we've kind of made the decision that, um, our 50th, uh, anniversary, um, is, is pretty much going to be culminated with this event. Um, you know, with COVID, we've kind of, uh, obviously been distracted from that and it prevented us from doing this whole, um, piece, if you will, at the end of last year when it was more appropriate, so. Um, I, I guess we're, if, as we move forwards, um, I think that this gives everybody an opportunity to, um, kind of bring both of those things to closure, so. Um, that's where we're at, um, and, uh, looking forward to, uh, pretty much most everybody here to be, uh, coming to the event in, uh, on the 18th, so.
Yes, thank you, Perry. Thank you very much. Um, as, I think as everyone knows, this is Deb's last board meeting with us. And we just want to thank her for her commitment over the past year and wish her well as she continues in her retirement. But thank you, Deb, for joining us this last year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Okay, um, I think we are getting down to wrapping up this meeting. Do we have need for an exec, we do have need for an executive session, a second one. And this one, the board will be, um, having further discussion on, on the DS contract. And Perry, did you have additional information that, that need, that you needed executive session?
Yep, um, I need, uh, George and Bob Avery to join us for a few minutes.
Okay, all right. Once again, thanks again, Godfrey, for joining us tonight. We look forward to you formally joining us next month.
Linda? Quick question. If anyone would like to be registered for rural schools, would you get ahold of me tomorrow? So I can complete the registrations.
Okay, thank you, Robin. Yes.
Linda, I just want to say, if anybody sees any of your colleagues from Sherburne, Realville, their OM team won Worlds Virtual and they are headed to Florida, uh, next week to participate in the in-person Worlds. So this is pretty exciting for our district.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Fantastic.
Cool.
Hearing Deb. That's great.
Very cool.
Absolutely. Uh, are you going to travel?
Not a perk of being a board member there, apparently.
Oh, okay, uh, motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Vanessa, and do I have a second?
Second.
Dave, thank you. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.